I'm going to give an indelible review of justice for all.
This meeting, the Westphal City Council, the order roll call.
Christie. Christie.
Here.
Crowner.
Here.
Hightmeyer.
Here.
Lees.
Here.
Waterman.
Here.
Need to perfect and approve the agenda.
Don't move.
Support. Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Motion carried, consent agenda.
Motion approved is presented.
Support. The motion was support to approve consent agenda. Items one through four, which are the minutes from the regular city council meeting on November 4th, 2020. Payment to Southeast Iowa Regional Airport Authority for the annual contribution. Payment to CPA Associates for legal services. And the claims list is presented in the amount of $412,932.20. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion carried. Staff reports, Dan.
Um, we've got, uh, pre-construction meeting next week on the landfill station, so that's going on. Other projects are moving along just fine. Mike will tell you about the latest staff who on the South Flow Station project when it's his turn to talk.
Do I have anything for Dan? Okay. Mike?
I'm going to say that for the last, we'll start with some good news first. SCC cross crossing out there. There's a few paint marks to be put down tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Lights were adjusted again to make them stay on longer, and I think that project's wrapped up after that. All the signs and stuff are up for it. Houston, they're down on the end trying to finish it up. We can all be happy that a plan came together with the new sweeper. We sweep solid for two weeks when the leaves came down heavy. Instead of two employees, we used one. The old sweeper at the end of each block, you had to dump into a dump truck and have a guy haul them away with the dump truck. These guys have been able to sweep all day long with only three dumps. And those three dumps fit into tandem trucks, so that's one load to the landfill. Saved a lot of manpower and a lot of time with that. It's working out really good with the leaves. South lift station, uh, there was a minor crack, which concrete's always got cracks in it. Nobody thought nothing of it. Now that the new lift station's in and buried and hooked up and pressured the dirt, it's cracked, opened up and shivered, and, uh, it has to be removed. So we got to undo the plumbing and pull the whole box back out. The manufacturer's standing behind the work, and they're working with Tom's tobacco service. I don't know timeframe of when the box will be built or when it'll get shipped here, but we'll have to, uh, back that up and dig it out and redo it again.
So how is it working now?
We're still running on the old system right now.
On the old system?
Yep. They'll have to just expose and dig all the pipe up, unhook it, pull them out of the box. And pull those sections, there's three or four sections of that box. They're going to bring all new sections. And they're redesigning it with more structural in it. Ben said in the corners are going to be thicker and stuff like that. I guess we can be glad it happened now and not after we disconnected the old one and we're running sewage into it, so just going to back, back it up for them. Other than that, that's all I got.
Do I have anything for Mike?
Mike, I've got two quick things. Number one, I had a note to ask you tonight about the manhole repairs fixing the sewer infiltration. It's been a couple of months now. I wondered if you had any thoughts on that.
We went and jetted our problem sewers here a few weeks back, and some of them were some of the major leaking ones we got into, like over on Aggie C where we had that huge repair. That one was just like a sieve. They went in there to run the jetter up there, and that whole manhole's bone dry except in the trough where the sewer's running. All of them, we went back. I had them go back on a rain, last rainstorm, which has been quite a while now. Pull manholes again and look, and, um, everything they'd done is sealed, and we're getting no infiltration. So we'll know more come spring. I mean, I think our issues now will be in town with gutters and sump pumps and things like that, but everything in the manholes and around the outside of the town where we're having all the issues, I feel we pretty much 100% got them sealed and everything's working good.
Could you keep on your notes for the spring? Just kind of keep track of if you think we're in a good position moving forward, if we need to do something internally with the town to try to get some more of those sump pumps pushed out, those kind of things. Just give us a recommendation.
And a lot of it's going to depend on how much snowfall, how much snow melt, what spring rains bring. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know, it's almost impossible to give you a definite number when everybody wants numbers, but every spring and fall and winter's different. And, uh, like I said, last year was just, was bad when we almost overflowed it because we had a lot of snow melt coming and all the rains and but, uh, we've found manholes knocked off and all these major leaks are fixed. I really think at this point, I can't guarantee it, but we'll know more come spring, but I think we got it where it's manageable now, where we're not going to have an emergency.
Okay. I'd just like to know your opinion in the spring as we get to that. And then secondly, I wasn't here last meeting, and I was going to ask this then. On the south lift station, uh, running into that old lift station structure, who should have known that was there?
I was working here when that got tore out. I thought it all got tore out, but I wasn't actually in that, down there in that position and working in the sewer department when all that happened. And I think the issue is that the existing line runs through the base of that. That's why they cut it off where they did and probably capped it. And nobody here remembered or understood or knew that it was even there. I, I was working here when that was tearing out, torn out, and that one that we're replacing now was built, but I didn't even know that that was what happened or where it was.
And I guess I'm not really looking at you. Don't we do some kind of surveys of that ground before we do a project like that?
That was roughly 25 feet underground where that happened.
Okay.
So soil samples, things were done, but you didn't, you know. And maps back then, um, when they hit the force main, it was not where the map showed it. Because we're trying to update and keep our GIS much more, so that's why that got hit. That wasn't their problem, and then we thought that was fixed and solved, and the box that was left in there was in where the new 24-inch had to go into that facility, and so it had to be removed. And when they went to remove it, you couldn't tell because it's full of sand and everything else. And in the, in the existing wet well, under the water level, was a pipe in the bottom of it that went into that that you never see the bottom of the wet well when the pump stuck it all the way down. Nobody knew that was there. And when they yanked it out, that pulled it out of the bottom of what we're trying to use and created another problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else for Mike?
When do you anticipate this, the new crack and the ongoing saga at the south lift station, when do you anticipate that to be, to start?
I just got a, a shop drive for the new box this morning, and I turned it back and put it out with some comments, and it's back on their, their schedule and they're able to get any fractures and chip that out to us and get some help. I told them that, uh, we do have a final completion deadline in April, and that it was unlikely to bring any extension out of the tunnel. Just because the structure was made poorly and the fact that they didn't, uh, didn't leave them some of that line, so it's on them to
Get it done as quick as they can, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks they would be shipping something, but it's, uh, it's on their schedule now, so.
Maybe during, uh, budget work session, Ben, might be a good idea for you to come down and have thought about that, what is it, 10,000 feet of main that probably needs to be replaced?
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh, were, we were wondering if you guys wanted to, to have a meeting about that, just to at least start the conversation about possibly doing a study. So, uh, if you guys want to do that, or, uh, you can come down to council.
Be, be a good idea, because I imagine that's a pretty hefty dollar item.
It is, and, and that's, uh, that's why it's important to do a study, to know, know what it would take to replace or rehab that line, and and, uh, when, if, if and when you do get to that point, uh, you'll need to get a construction permit from the D R. And one of the first steps on that is doing a facility plan, which is preliminary engineering and, uh, doing that preliminary report. So if, if you guys were to start that study soon, you wouldn't necessarily have to go continue into detailed design and construction if you guys weren't ready for that, um, at that time, but we were just, uh, knew something of interest to the city and
Which comes, if I must come down, then if you can, come down the next council meeting, and we can put that on the agenda to talk about it.
Okay.
See what can happen.
Alright.
If you can get some numbers together right now. Please stay here.
Um, I mean, I've started crunching some really rough numbers, but obviously before, we're talking about doing a study to to, uh, really actually start looking at it seriously, um, so any numbers I would give you are just, you know, very informal, I guess.
Yes.
That's part of what the study is for, is to, to figure out what the options are, what it would take, you know, it would cost roughly.
And to discuss between the more than one option versus open cutting it and replacing it all, and it's a chance that the new pumps in the west and the way they operate, that we may be able to downsize the pipe and maybe sleeve what we have, you know, after what we dig, so there's lots of variables on how we can.
Alrighty, you guys have all something for Mike? Jess.
Uh, everything's been going pretty good. I just want to remind the citizens that, uh, holidays are coming up. And when you have packages delivered to your homes, make sure you have somebody there that's able to secure those or have them delivered somewhere else where somebody is home. We had some vandalism done at the hospital, and I'm following up with Fort Madison Police Department. It appears that they had the same problem down there, and, uh, we may have a suspect, so I'm going to follow up on that tomorrow. Um, Tyler will be, he's in step two right now. On Saturday, he's going to step three of his FTO program, and him and Cody, they will be working third shift for the next three weeks, so I switched them and another officer around, so the same coverage will be there, but they're just working different shifts.
And how many are out with COVID right now?
I have two positives and one we're waiting to hear. He came back negative, but his son was positive, and we're waiting to hear back on his wife. We got one coming back on Friday, and then the sergeant will be back on Monday of next week, Monday or Tuesday of next week. Tuesday of next week, he'll be back. So.
I just want to make you guys aware that we've got officers that are either quarantined or actually infected with it.
Yep.
So. Anybody have anything for Jess?
Jesse, I just wondered if you've had anybody sign up their cameras?
Nope.
Okay.
Nothing that I've seen of, and I haven't heard anything from Brad, Brad either. He'd be the one that lets me know about that, but we haven't had.
Nine up the first day, so all 12 of mine here.
So.
Okay.
There may be a few out there, but I haven't heard from Brad yet. I'll look into it with Brad tomorrow.
Hey, thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
John?
Yeah, we, we've had quite a few people actually register the cameras. Stacia's been entering them into Shield. So you guys should be able to start going into Shield, and if you have vandalism and in certain area, look in that area to see if the cameras are there, but yeah, we've, it's, we've had a great turnout on that registration. Yeah, Stacia's been putting them in. Um, I would say we've probably gotten about 20 or 30. So. Just wanted to come out and let you know.
Thanks.
Figured since we were on the topic. On the building side, been going around moving signs out of right away, had a few. Uh, probably noticed the rental one down there, Kitty from the fire station, that's been moved into their property, not the city's anymore. Sent out notices, and the clock is counting on several nuisances. Two in particular are rentals, so letters went to the actual person staying there, and then the landlord as well has been made aware that they have an issue with their property and resolve it. Because that does put their rental license at jeopardy. Once the clock is expired, they were advised it will be turned over to the city attorney for further, uh, action regarding that. A, uh, hospital program or, uh, issue is moving along. We've had a couple problems, hiccups with how they want to do the water service. Mike is working with Klinger and Associates on that one. Uh, because that's who they had do the blueprints for the layout of the water lines, so he's working with them on that. Mike came up with a pretty good solution that should benefit both the city and them. And then, uh, Menards is flying along. Mayor, you asked at the last meeting what that was on the west end. They're actually extending their large vehicle storage, their outdoor storage. They're extending that down. That's what that is, but it, it does look like a entirely separate structure with that wide area going through there. On the fireside, we're almost ready to break 600 calls for the year, which is, it's been a couple years since we've had that many. It's been a busy year. I'm not ready to attribute it to COVID. Uh, we do have some COVID-related calls, but the majority of our calls, as far as the medical side go, are just lift assists. But we've also had a, an uptick in actual fire-related alarms or calls. And we do have a couple alarm systems in town that I am after the property owner to deal with because we're getting a lot of false alarms, and that's something that we try to limit.
We still have the, uh, so many false alarms, and they get fined?
Yes, Stacia tracks both the police departments and the fire departments, and then she sends them to me for verification on the fireside.
Do I have anything for Sean? Mm-hmm, thank you.
Let me know on that one. If nothing happens here by the end of the week, or by the end of next week, okay?
You got my money. Sower's got my money.
You got your money? Ah, yes. Uh, we are doing a choice for dots drive, so you'll see the guys out collecting money for choice for dots, because we just broke even at our pancake breakfast, but they're doing a sock drive. Guys are out for Christmas stockings, collecting money to outfit.
Are they wearing something identifiable?
They are wearing their bunker gear. They have the vest on, and they got a sock, and cap on, and they have fire trucks by them. So we're going to high-visibility locations and parking lots.
Okay. Thanks. Kelly, you guys going on?
Not tonight.
Leslie?
Um, start working next year's budget. Mike wouldn't surprise for having the first department head to turn this in. Dan and I were talking, we were looking at, constantly looking at the second meeting in December, have a brief work session. So that counts for the guys and the ops maybe on the budget for this year before we get down to it. We're looking to be a second meeting in December. And just be a brief one there. I, I don't know how many nerves we'll have pulled together by the end of May with evaluations and all the departments that's just turned in.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
And I think kind of more what we're looking for are rough ideas of what your plans for next year are, so we can base our planning on what you guys are looking for, so.
Leslie, did you say the second meeting of December?
Yes.
Okay.
This would be a short brief one.
Have you got anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Um, first I have good news. We have a couple volunteers for neighbors helping neighbors. And they're going to be helping soon as their background checks are cleared, so that's great news. Also, we had the idea of having a Christmas decoration contest for West Burlington this year, and it was, we were in the, the, um, figuring out exactly the details and found out that the radio stations in Burlington are having a contest for Burlington and West Burlington. So we think we're going to defer to them and, um, let people know that they have till Monday to sign up at the radio stations to be in on their, um, Christmas holiday decoration contest. That's it.
Andy?
Uh, actually just had one more thing from Mike. I just wanted to say, driving down south gear, that feels way better down there now. Uh, so great job on that. Uh, I think that dial bar replacement did a good job, so hopefully that holds up for a long time.
I've been asked about doing the rest of the way on ours. Did the price, but I would rather give this a fall and breeze, a fall and breeze.
Yeah.
Wonderful amount of that, just for that, so that we don't snap and power loss pop out and things, because the ground's going to shift. I think we got to give it time before we go ahead and get it put, all the way up to agency, and see what happens. But, but it is, we do it last, like, if it's like, keep a balance, say that.
Yeah, well, it feels great now, huge difference, so thanks for getting that done.
Voice? Freeze?
No, I'm good.
Yeah.
Good.
Good. I got two things. The first is, we received an award from the Iowa Ready Mixed Concrete Association. 2020 Excellent in Concrete Awards for the Gere Avenue Trail, recreational trails to the city of West Burlington, West Burlington, Iowa. It's very nice block. They brought it by here, what, week was ago?
Yeah, it was last, late last week, Thursday, I think, last week.
That and the other thing, around, uh, right before five o'clock, I received an email from, uh, Della Schmidt, and she's, uh, they've put together, from the Greater Burlington Partnership, they put together a letter, and they're wanting, uh, both mayors to sign. And I'll just read you what the letter said. And pertains to COVID and what's been going on in our area. Uh, friends, neighbors, community leaders, and business owners, we've seen incredible escalation of COVID-19 across the state of Iowa. On Monday, November 16th, Des Moines County's positivity rate was 22.6%. These cases, which include 160 new diagnosis from November 13th to November 16th, represent real people. The virus impacts their health, their families, and their jobs. Although the death rate for COVID-19 is low, thankfully mild cases result in kids being unable to attend school, businesses closing temporarily, and family members isolating themselves in their homes. Serious cases that result in hospitalization lead to overworked staff and scarcity of resources. Healthcare workers at Great River Health are working around the clock in full PPE while caring for COVID-19 patients. Hospitalizations are at an all-time high, and there's a greater percentage of critically ill patients. This is unacceptable and unsustainable for the caregivers on the front lines in Greater Burlington. We owe to all the healthcare heroes to do everything we can to ease the strain on them. It begins with the choices we make every day. We must slow the spread of COVID-19, and we know how to do it. Stay home as much as possible. When you go out and are around others, uh, stay at least six feet away from others. Please wear a mask. We can't do anything about the rest of the state, but we can work together to slow the spread of this virus in our Southeast Iowa communities. As we head into Thanksgiving and the holiday season, we ask everyone in Greater Burlington and Des Moines County to make a plan to keep yourselves, your families, and our communities safe. Don't socialize indoors with people who don't live in your household. Don't take our word for it. Federal agencies also recommend this. We know it's tough when the pandemic, pandemic began to surf in Southeast Iowa eight months ago. Many people thought it would be winding down by now. Fortunately, our reality is dire. Anyone can get COVID-19. There is no way to predict how it will affect you. Right now, the choices you make are the only way to avoid it. Please make smart choices and stay safe. Well, let's go ahead and sign that along with, uh, Mayor Billups. Anybody wishing to address council on matters that are not on the agenda tonight? Okay, new business. Item number one is to consider a second reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing section 5501, 5504, the current code, and adding new sections 55.2 and 55.21 related to animal control regulations.
Motion approved.
Support. Motion with support, any discussion?
Thank you, Kelly, for going further into this, delving into it, so I do what we were going to do or not do.
Roll call.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number two is consider a resolution waiving the final reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing section 5501, 5504, the current code, and adding new sections 55.2 and 55.21 related to animal control regulations.
Oh, move.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number three is this, a resolution setting a date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into a water revenue loan and disbursement agreement and the borrow money thereunder. That would be set for December 6th, uh, December 2nd, I'm sorry, at, uh, 6:00 p.m. And this would be to borrow up to $5,977,000.
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number four is a resolution setting a date for a public hearing on urban renewal plan amendment for December 16th at 6:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Support.
There's a motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number five is consider purchase of pump for the west three lift station. Any amount of $7,230 plus freight.
Motion approved.
Support. Motion with support, any discussion?
This is the same pump we talked about two or three meetings ago, correct? Okay.
Roll call.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number six is consider an addendum to the engineering service agreement with Snyder and Associates related to Des Moines County landfill lift station project. And that would be the lump sum of $37,300, uh, not to exceed $91,000, for a total of $128,300.
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
These costs are also being covered?
Yeah, this is the, uh, the landfill will cover that.
Okay.
Roll call.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Carried. Item number seven is consider supplemental agreement for engineering service related to the water tower and booster station improvement projects. And that is, uh, a lump sum of $123,000, uh, not to exceed $235,000, for a total of $358,000. This would be for the water tower.
Don't move. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eight is to consider resolution for the annual appropriation for Campus Community Developers LLC. That's an amount of $71,034. Uh, that breaks down $67,380 for the Blackhawk Towers and $3,654 for Millennium.
So moved.
Support.
Say that again.
It's a motion with support. I can't say Millennium. It's a motion with support. I can't say Millennium. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number nine is to consider resolution approving the annual appropriations of funds for the Greater Burlington Partnership Economic Development Agreement, an amount of five thousand dollars.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number ten is consider resolution authorizing a transfer on used stipend payments for the fire department, an amount of nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars, to be transferred to the reserve fire fund.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eleven is to review the annual TIF debt payments for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. We're gonna have seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars in debt. And, but the recommendation is only to certify seven hundred thousand of that, which means that there will be more money turned back to the other entities. And we have a reserve fund in the, in the TIF debt fund of about, what, one point two million. And this has to be done by December first of the year.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lees.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number twelve is to consider the first reading of an ordinance amending the sign code. Everybody had a chance to look at the sign code, as amended, which includes the fin signs, flashing signs.
I wanted to talk for just a second. I couldn't make the last meeting. I wasn't feeling very well, and I wanted to make sure I was distancing from everybody. But I went through as many cities as I could in the state today just to see, and I couldn't find a single one that allowed flashing lights. They were prohibited in all cities, sign ordinances, and they're also not permitted by the Iowa DOT Outdoor Advertising Sign Regulations. So, I'm surprised that we got to the decision to allow flashing signs, and I don't agree with that. I have no issue with the fin signs, but I, I think that should be changed, and we shouldn't allow flashing signs.
Well, I didn't have that information, but upon hearing that, I'll have to agree with it. I'll have to agree that we shouldn't have them if DOT doesn't even recommend that we have them, or recommends that we don't.
I really. Who's gonna go out and tell the guy that's paying anywhere from probably thirty to fifty thousand dollars in taxes every year? They can't have a sign. That doesn't really bother anybody.
Yeah, I think it's pretty easy to see, which is why they're, they're not only banned in all Iowa, but pretty much every state, that that would be a distraction to drivers. From the state regulation says in general, flashing intermittent or moving lights are prohibited.
Yeah, but that's on state highways.
You, you got it, but then Fort Madison, Mount Pleasant, Burlington, you name it, Oskaloosa, Tomahawk, Keokuk, Cedar Falls, Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, on down the list, they're not, not allowed.
They're not allowed, Andy, but who's, who's enforcing them? I mean, you go over to Burlington, and there's a sign that's in a public right of way. I didn't, that advertises the casino.
That, that's a, I think that is different than.
It's not a, it's not a flashing sign, but it's a sign, it's a sign that's lit up.
I, I can't worry about Burlington. All I've got here is West Burlington, and I don't think we should have that. I, I don't think this is Vegas. I don't think we need it. I think you can have signs that don't flash.
Well, if it's not Vegas, then we shouldn't have fin signs either, because those things are distracting to drivers. And those things blowing the wind. And we can't have it both ways. You can have it one way or the other, but can't have it really both ways.
That does.
As far as I'm, I mean, how many people actually drive by Dairy Brothers at night to see that sign? That bothers anybody? And if I remember right, the council member that sat in your seat was adamant about getting them to sign the flash, get that flashing sign.
I can't have anything to do with somebody that sat here before me, even if they're related to me, though I think I am sitting in Rick's seat. But I don't think we should have flashing lights, and obviously, the state doesn't think so, and most other cities don't think so.
Well, then the state needs to take their flashing signs off the highways. There's numerous of those, those overhead signs that they have telling you what, what the road conditions are and everything else.
Well, they, they do make a distinction between a advertising sign and a road construction sign, or a sign telling you which way to go, navigation.
Well, it's up to you people, I guess. It's up to Sean to go tell the guy.
Are you thinking, Sean?
Andy, is there a distance from the roadway in the state that you've read all day?
I didn't see anything in the state. They just, they only have that one sentence that just says it's prohibited.
But there's not a distance?
No.
Would council like if I were to send a message out to Iowa building inspectors and see what they allow?
Regarding, I'll take a picture of the sign that's in question and send that out and ask them specifically on that sign?
I, I'm certain Andy's right. They're banned everywhere. I mean, the staff put together the ordinance as was recommended at the work session. So, if you wanna change that, we can. It's just, you know, staff put together what you, what council asks for, so.
They do still have, I mean, they still have their, their permanent sign. This is a portable one that's by the road. But it does, this will still allow them to have the electronic message centers. He could put one of that, he could put that up on his existing sign if he wants. You know, that changing.
And I guess I'm, I'm talking about writing our ordinance, not just that one sign. I mean, that's the only sign today that does it. But I mean, imagine looking outside right now and seeing every business out there's got a big flashing sign out there. So, I'd rather that not be there.
I did bring it up at the workshop, but it was suggested at that time that that would include the running light signs too, that would all have to be prohibited, which I don't think is really, is right. We're just talking about flashing light signs here, right here.
The running light signs, like on a message board? Is that like?
Uh, it was mentioned that some, somebody's got a sign in the shape of an arrow that the lights run around it, so all the signs like that would also come under this, but I don't think they would. I think we're just talking about flashing lights right here.
I thought before, Andy, when we talked about that particular sign over on Agency Street, that you, you didn't care if they were red, just, or not, you didn't care if they were white, just so that they weren't red or blue, because then it was re, re-replicating, like, an emergency vehicle. That was one of your first conversations, and now you wanted to ban them all?
No, I.
They're red, white, or blue?
My first conversation that, was that the code made it sound like it was only red and blue, when it should have been everything, and I wanted to clear that up. Somehow that got lost, and we, we just adjusted the red and blue. But my intention was to make it clear that there was no flashing lights that were allowed.
Oh, it's a pleasure here with this thing. We have three readings. Okay, hearing nothing, we're going on. Council takes no action, as far as I'm concerned. Item number thirteen, consider approving the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? You did get, Leslie sent out a, a correction sheet on what to do with it.
Under your key in your computer.
Yeah, where it was prisoners instead of.
Yeah.
Police.
Roll call.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Hightmeyer.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fourteen is to discuss water rates for a financing water tower project. There you go, Dan.
My mail pretty much describes it. In order to pay for this debt, and our financial advisor has, has discovered that in order to make the debt payments, that we need a water rate increase of, she says thirty-six percent, but when we do the, do it by the dollar fee at two ninety, it comes to thirty-five percent. And since we don't know what sales are gonna be, thirty-five percent's close enough for thirty-six. So, that's what we put forward. There's also distributed later. It'll cost us more money. The debt will cost us a little more money. We could distribute, we could spread out the increase to two-twenty percents instead of one-thirty-five percent. But doesn't, again, the financing costs us more money that way.
Well, when.
We have to make the debt payments plus ten percent of the debt payments for the revolving home fund money.
Well, when does the first debt payment do?
A small interest payment can do at the end of next year, they project. It depends how fast the project goes and how fast we withdraw. So, they were, they were saying a first small interest payment at the end of next year, and then then.
The end of, the end of.
This year, end of this year, twenty twenty-one.
This fiscal year?
Yes, this year, yes.
So.
The big payments will start, they project, in twenty-one, twenty-two.
So, what, could it be spread out over? We do, we do a ten percent increase, say, I'm just throwing this out. We do a ten percent increase in January. Would that cover that first payment?
First payment that's due this year, it's, it's a small amount. It's like nine thousand six hundred and twelve.
So, there's enough there to cover that?
Yeah.
So, then, in fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two, can we do twenty percent, twenty percent in July, and then, again, fifteen percent in January, or February, whatever, halfway through the fiscal year?
Yeah, I suppose. I mean, that.
I mean.
That money's coming in, or that, I mean, we should have enough to make the debt payments that way.
So, we probably won't have enough, because you're only plugging that half, or half a year of the other increase.
Yeah, I could.
Yeah, well, what's, what's the construction time? It's gonna be?
The final completion date for that is June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Those projects are pretty front-loaded, so that first payment's usually pretty big when they buy all their.
When they buy.
Supplies and materials and stuff, so that first payment's usually really huge.
And it depends on when they consider it substantially completed.
All right.
Yeah, on this project, substantially completed is gonna be more or less the final completion, because they can't use the water tower until it's painted and disinfected and all that. And you have to erect the tower in, in, in full hand, so it's kinda hard to start using it much before they're done. That's the critical path of the current structure, so. We didn't, didn't plan on a substantial completion date much earlier than the final completion date. Sometimes it's confusing. Sometimes there's a way to use the new facility before officially done.
I think we've done that with the sewer plant.
Yeah, which on sewer plant, the remaining item was sled removal, which is something that needed to be done to increase flow equalization capacity, that then restricted the plant's ability to meet their F-one requirement. But in this case, we anticipate that the tower is gonna be the thing that takes until June twenty twenty-two, and so it's unlikely that they'd be able to use the new facilities much before that.
We just.
Guess what I'm getting at? It might be an easier hit on the residents.
It might, because the longer you strip it out, that's my point, is in that segment out, if you're getting your costs to be a little bit more. But yes, the residents won't feel it all as much at one time.
And I mean, essentially, that's why that option of the two-twenty's is there, is that does the same thing, only the, the payments are backloaded, so that if we pay a little more interest that way.
I know, we got a lot of single-family income people here that are getting hit with this, and we still have, we have another project coming up, another sewer project. There's a tax still up. They're not working. I don't wanna hit them that hard.
So, if you're taking ten percent now, ten, twenty percent to wire one, and another ten percent in January?
Well, if we don't need it this January. I would just.
We don't need it till, we won't need it till June.
Till June, well, or July, right?
Well, yes, we need next fiscal.
Next fiscal year, July first, have a twenty percent increase, or whatever.
That was the second option. We weren't, the, in the pro formas that we sent out, we weren't looking to do it any sooner than July first. So, the two-twenty, the two-twenty percenters that you have before you is doing twenty percent just this July, and twenty percent next July.
Well, how's that affecting the interest rate, so?
Because the payments get, the payment, we reduced the, the payments that first year, so we have enough to cover that. So, it, basically, some of the payments get pushed back on the loan, so we pay those later. So, the, actually, the payments get structured differently.
Can you run the numbers with fifteen, fifteen, and then twenty, twenty? Like, if we need thirty-six percent, what if we went fifteen and then?
You'll need more than thirty-six, though, because you're, you're increasing your interest cost, but you're pushing your payment back.
I see.
You know, you borrow, you're pushing your payment back, you're gonna have.
So, that's why you need forty? I don't know. I choke and gag on my hundred-and-eight-dollar monthly water bill, and I've only used like thirty-five hundred gallons of water. And it's like.
Keep in mind, we push this project back until that old water tower is completely ready to fall down, because of this reason, that we really didn't wanna put too much on people. And we got to the point, but now our back's against the wall. And we got to the point, but now our backs against the wall. We have to get, we have to do it now, so.
So, so.
We're not using that tower at the moment.
So if we go ten this Ja, coming January and then ten and fifteen?
You're going to need about forty.
Okay, then. Ten, fifteen, and fifteen. That's forty, right? What would that do?
We'd have to have our person run that because she runs all that stuff. But I mean, I'm sure it's doable and we, we can have her set it up any way you want. But, you know, I'm guessing that affects the interest a little bit, but maybe not as much as the two twenties. I don't know. We'll have to see, we'll have to see when running those numbers what that does.
How many for sale license cards do you have, Andy? It might see business pick up. I mean, people are hit with COVID. There are a lot of people still not working. And the people that are COVID, they can't go back to work for, because they're so weak.
I know. They'll, they'll the six million dollar water tower over there.
I know, I know, but we have to feel their pain. This, we got to explain it to them.
And this isn't my philosophy on how to run a city either. Because this has been talked about for years, years, and years, like twenty years. It's been known that this needed to be done and it was talked about then. And now we can't even use what we've got. It's shut down. So it's like an emergency now. We're doing it. We haven't planned. There's been no plan that whole time.
Well, actually, before we built, uh, the Public Works Building, it was before the council, which of these projects they wanted to do and they chose the Public Works Building. So that, I mean, it was talked about six or seven years ago whenever we built that and council made that decision at that time to prioritize the Public Works Building over the water tower. Uh, there were some, there was some dispute between council members, but ultimately that's what was decided.
If we had plans on our infrastructure and when we're replacing or fixing, we, we would have a plan and we would have done it. We still don't have that. We're waiting until it's an emergency. We can't even use it because it leaks so bad and now here we are. It's this council that has to do it. And raise people's water rates thirty-six percent.
Well, previous, you know, I got to defend previous councils also because they, they've had to make tough decisions then too.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not all on you guys right now.
No, but I know about twenty years ago, this was discussed, that we need to work on replacing that. And nothing was ever done about it. Yeah, I'm just saying, that's not my philosophy. I think we need plans and we need to follow them.
So, I mean, you guys, you think ten now, fifteen in July and fifteen in January?
If you run the, run the numbers.
Well, we'll have to get back. I think they're waiting for us to decide on this to the completed application.
You don't have three reading, three council readings to do an ordinance by January first and have it published?
Well, we can, as soon as we fit after, it can be closed.
So it comes, so it comes in February or March?
That is a lower usage month, so.
Uh, personally with where we're at today, and we need to get this project going and pay for it, I, as Therese was saying, really feel for the people right now and any increase is going to hit even harder. And so my thought would be that we need to get the thirty-six percent done and have an overall less cost to the city and explain it well and let them know it's coming. But then when we go into budget time, I think we need to find a way to get the property taxes lower to help offset some of that cost right now and put some of the discretionary spending on hold to help cover some of that overall cost to our citizens. Uh, and I know it's not the same, but in the end to, to our citizen, they're paying out of their pocket for these services. And I'd rather have this new water tower than something discretionary, so that would be my hope.
Well, tomorrow can they run those numbers and you send them out to council? Can we make this decision at the next council meeting? On, on the financing part of it?
I, I think you kind of have to decide. If you want to spread it out like Hans said, we can just do that and run with it. But they're kind of wanting, uh. I mean, we don't, I mean, I'm sure we can put it, I'm sure there's not, we can put, I'm sure we can push it back about two weeks, so. You're going to send an application and maybe a little bit later, but I don't know whether that matters.
I don't know. I, they just said that they were needing this so they could, um, the application.
I don't think there's a deadline, so they're not going to need the money.
And then if we do the thirty-six percent, that wouldn't be till next July.
Right.
Right.
Then you can sell. You got seven months to sell it.
Might not hurt that next July if it does January. In the long run, it's going to be less expensive.
I feel that too right now. It's not good, not good.
You might do thirty-six percent all at once.
Well, that's what it's going to have to be.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, I mean.
Three, five, thirty-six. It all comes on usage. It gets on usage.
Well, what about the people speaking usually? What about the people that fall at nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight thousand gallons? Where do they end up at? Does the next rate increase for a million?
It's, it's that same rate, up to a million.
Well, it says three thousand gallons to nine hundred ninety-seven thousand gallons increase. Then the next one is one million, one gallon.
I think that means that, I think that for the title, I think that needs to say.
That's what I'm pointing to.
Up to a million.
It's proposed two dollars and ninety cents per thousand gallon.
Up to a million. It should say up to a million. And then from a million and one gallon to the next tier, he just has, he has a gap there between nine hundred ninety-seven thousand and a million. In his memo.
That, when we talk about basic water rate, well, the first, there's three thousand in the base.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's true.
The next, the next line should say three thousand.
If you add that three thousand up, up to that nine ninety-seven, it's a million. Yeah, that's what it is.
Three thousand the first one, they're saying that the nine hundred ninety-seven additional gallon.
It looks funny there, but from three thousand to nine hundred ninety-seven thousand.
Then the next one's one million and one.
Yeah, yeah. It should, it used to say, it used to say the next nine hundred ninety-seven. The first three thousand, then the next nine hundred ninety-seven thousand.
This may be a crazy question and something we can't do, but is there any way to shift some of this around and push some of the increase onto the heavier users and raise those a higher percentage?
They, they will be higher percentage because of the fact that we're using two dollars and ninety cents per tier.
That's why we're not doing a percentage. When we do the flat, when we do the flat number fee increase like that, that does push most of the increase on the heavier users.
Abs- absolutely understand. And I guess what I'm asking is, could you even push slightly more on that?
I think you guys can do whatever you want as far as that goes, like.
You know, does, does raising, and I'm just asking the question, I, I would need to see the math to even know if I'm in favor of this. But if, if you took that top tier and went instead of seven oh nine to seven fifteen, seven twenty, does that, how much does that lower the guy that's only paying the?
Yeah, I don't know if we have anybody in that range now. The hospital used to be and they've instituted a lot of water savings to save them, to save them money. And so I'm not sure they even hit that tier yet.
They didn't, they haven't.
Yeah, they haven't hit that tier in a while since they started saving water, so. I don't think there's any users in that very top tier.
Well, even if you talk the tier before that, and again, I know it's a balance. I don't want to push any businesses out either, which are, are vital to our community. I'm just also trying to find a way to, to not make grandma down the street have the huge consumptions.
Yeah, I mean.
And this one, that I pulled, so I'll look at one month and see what our average is. The hospital will use one day two hundred seventy-nine thousand. The one next to that, our user is three hundred ninety thousand. The one left from that, two hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred twenty-four, one seventy-nine-nine, one sixty-eight. We've got, so they'll go all the way down. They're like one, two, three, four. Fourteen users, that's over a hundred thousand. And then there's the hospital.
But if we're not making the decision tonight and we're getting some more numbers, I would be interested in seeing if you shifted that second tier up twenty cents and the third tier up twenty cents, just as an example. And then put that savings on to the lowest tier, what that does to you?
We can, we can structure the payments for the thirty, for the thirty-six percent or thirty-five percent. We can structure the payments that way and we can, we can figure out how to get that when we do the water rates in July. We can run the numbers and figure out how we get the amount of money we need then. We can structure that differently. We don't have to decide how we're doing that tonight. We have to decide how we're structuring the payments tonight. So if you want to make, if you want to borrow that or have the less financing costs and do the, and do the thirty-five percent all at once, we can play with those tiers during budget time when we're discussing the water rates and decide how we're going to do that then. But we know, but we know we're going to have a, you know, payment due that we're going to have to cover. But we'll have time to adjust that. We have to tell them real soon how we want those payments structured.
I understand.
But how, whatever tier we get, however we get that money, we can play with that.
So how much extra interest was it going to be?
It's like thirty-five thousand, whatever, two years.
Oh, okay.
Well, if we don't have to do this tonight, I would rather see the numbers that Hans was proposing before we make a decision.
What's the rest of your thing?
I think that.
What'd you say, Therese? I can't.
I said, I agree with Andy. I asked about that.
Yeah, I agree too.
What did you say, ten in January and then fifteen and fifteen? Is that what you were looking?
Yeah, ten, fifteen, fifteen.
We can have her run that and see what it looks like.
And maybe stick whatever that ten amounts to, stick sixty percent or seventy percent of that ten into that second and third tier.
What'd you say? It was just one in the third tier, right?
The people are going to be in that.
Just the hospital in the third tier. So, I mean, that's what you're talking, is you're doing, that's the hospital. I mean, it go, I mean, they pay all the tiers, so, I mean, everybody pays, pays all the tiers as you go up. But they're the only ones that reach that third.
Yeah, any old business.
They're not building new out there, so maybe they'll increase, uh, they're going to increase some, they're going to increase water usage some by with that new building.
Any old business? Anyone wishing to ask the council on matters we did discuss or didn't discuss?
Thank you, Dan. One thing, Ross. I got a message from the two guys that were working out there at Broadway and AC tonight in our building stock.
Campaign, so far they've raised, uh, one thousand eighty-three dollars and one cent. So I'd like to thank everyone that was through that intersection and donated tonight. You're helping us help the kids in the area at Christmas and that's a great thing.
And where are they going to be on Friday?
I believe he was thinking down by the reclex that, uh, Broadway and Division, yeah.
Well, Dan, what's your adjourned?
I moved.
Report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything's adjourned. Thank you.